It is six o'clock, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the Thursday, October 20th, 2022 Board of Commissioners meetings. I have asked Commissioner O'Quinn to lead us in the invocation, and I'll ask Commissioner Tosterson if he'll lead us in the pledge, please.
Please stand.
Most gracious and merciful Father, we come before you with hearts, humble hearts, with gratitude and thanksgiving, the way, Father, you have blessed us in this community and allowed us to live in such a wonderful place. And, Father, we ask that you would watch over and keep all our citizens, help and guide them and protect them, pray for our first responders, and you would continue to protect them as they go out and serve us each and every day. Father, we pray for our country. We pray that as we go into this election season, that all will take the opportunity to study the issues and cast votes. We ask, Father, tonight as we meet, that you would give us wisdom and discernment and to help us make decisions that are honorable and right. We pray these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have three people that have signed up for public comment. The first on our list this evening is Catherine Ridley. If she would come forward and state your name for the record, please. And you have five minutes.
Hi there. I'm Catherine Ridley. I'm a resident of St. Simons, and I'm here tonight representing 100 miles regarding the draft resolution opposing proposed changes to the right whale speed rule. As you all know, the North Atlantic right whale is Georgia's state marine mammal and because of the singular role that our coast plays in its survival. The Georgia and North Florida coastline is the only known calving ground for this species in the entire world. And every winter, our community comes together in really wonderful ways to celebrate these new births and to follow the success of each mother-child pair. These are beloved animals to Georgians and animals that in turn depend on all of us for their survival. But right whales are dying. There are fewer than 350 individuals left on the planet and only about 100 reproducing females. It's likely that unless immediate and serious action is taken, right whales will go extinct and very soon, possibly within our lifetimes. By far, the biggest threats to their survival are caused by humans, namely vessel strikes and entanglements. But with human causes can come human solutions. This type of ingenuity and partnership has happened before, right here in Georgia. Consider that it was a Georgia shrimper who created the first turtle excluder device that now protects sea turtles from drowning in shrimp nets the world over. And we know that boaters are some of our coast's most passionate conservationists and most care deeply about our wildlife and understand that these issues and interests go hand in hand. So here's the issue. Fast-moving vessels have limited visibility and simply cannot see these large animals in the water before it's too late, which is why the speed rule is so critical and has been so effective. But until now, this rule has only applied to vessels above 65 feet, meaning that too many whales are still being struck and killed, including just last year when a mother and calf was hit by a 52-foot vessel in Florida. Now, let's recognize that this is a vessel-strike rule, not a boat-strike rule. The proposed changes would apply to large yachts and vessels from 35 to 65 feet. Candidly, a 35-foot yacht is a really big vessel. It's not the average boat of choice for most of us here in coastal Georgia that we're talking about. And of course, we also know that no one wants to hit a whale. If a 35-foot vessel strikes a right whale, everyone on the water is going to be in serious danger. OHM supports the proposed amendments, and we have made additional recommendations to strengthen the rule. I encourage you to visit our website to learn more, and we're happy to meet and discuss all of this further. But tonight, we strongly recommend that you do not adopt the resolution in front of you. Instead, we ask that you write a letter outlining your concerns and offering constructive solutions that can both protect right whales and respond to the unique nature of Georgia's coast and our recreational and commercial interests. For example, because of our location off the Georgia Bight, Georgia's our coast has a gradually sloping continental shelf. And what that means is, you know, right whales typically don't travel in those shallow channels close to shore because it's just too shallow. So you could reasonably ask NOAA to consider exemptions in certain depths along our coast. Similarly, you could ask that they phase in the new requirements, close loopholes for state and federal vessels engaged in non-emergency work, and launch a much-needed boater education and notification system. None of that would happen simply just by opposing it outright. In crafting your letter, we encourage you to reach out to biologists at Georgia DNR, including Clay George, a nationally respected right whale expert. All of us owe a debt of gratitude to these local biologists who quite literally put their lives on the line year after year to protect these whales. And they need to be included in this conversation as well. Now, the reality is, in conclusion, that most of us in this room have never been fortunate enough to see a right whale in person. And that puts the whales at a disadvantage. We have the luxury here of looking away or ignoring their suffering, which in the case of entanglements and vessel strikes is immense. But we cannot stand back and do nothing or claim that it's too inconvenient as our whales die and disappear from this planet. So in closing, I urge you all to represent all of your constituents' interests in protecting right whales and our enjoyment of our natural resources. Use your unique platform as commissioners to write a letter that effectively balances the whales' needs with those of our commercial and recreational fishing communities. We have a lot of confidence that you'll be able to craft a smart and thoughtful letter and do justice to all of us who love this special place. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second speaker tonight is Mr. Jeff Kilgore. If you'll come forward, please, state your name for the record. And you have five minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here and speak before you. As you know, almost every time I've come before you, I've asked that you obey your own ordinances and that you study them and you know what the requirements are. Tuesday afternoon, you had a special call meeting, and you discussed speed limits and golf carts. And at the conclusion of that meeting, the chairman asked that you have staff have something ready to add to the agenda tonight. And I've, over the years, not gotten too carried away because I didn't think the culture with the former county manager was ever going to change. And so I've never made an issue of this, but the ordinance specifically prohibits you from adding items to the agenda unless it's an emergency or if it's extreme importance to Glen County. Now, you may think the speed limit and the golf carts are important, and I wouldn't disagree with that, but that means they're important to all of the residents. Therefore, they, under Georgia law, have a right to know that you're going to be conducting business, and it's their business, and it affects them. You know, you guys, somehow it's gotten to the point where the county government is like a czar, or you guys are in charge of something. You put your name on the ballot to represent the people and to conduct the people's business, and they expect you to follow your own ordinances. And so when you add things and you exclude the public, you're breaking your own ordinance in, I think, arguably, Georgia law. You've got a purchasing ordinance that prohibits a conflict of interest from your staff members, but routinely, they present memos to you supporting renewing contracts for vendors with whom they've worked over the years, and they really like those people, and so they don't want the contract to be bid again. You have staff members who endorse former employees for contracts, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Your purchasing ordinance specifically prohibits that. It calls for you to not have a staff person participate, even in the drafting of an RFP, if there's a conflict. Now, you may have been told the conflict of interest requires a monetary interest, and that's wrong. If your judgment's impaired, you have a conflict. And in purchasing, if you are dealing with a former employee, I can assure you, you've got a conflict. You've got an ethics ordinance. I don't know if any of you have ever even looked at it because nothing happens if anything goes wrong. There's no enforcement provision. But there are penalties. And the penalties include suspension without pay, termination of employment, removal from office, if the ethics are violated. Now, I got to tell you, I've seen a lot of situations where ethics have been violated, not only by staff members, but by members of this board, not necessarily some of you that are sitting here today, but over the past 15 or so years. But there's a provision in Georgia State Code, Title 45, Section 10, Paragraph 1 and 3. Paragraph 1 deals with government employees, your staff. 3 deals with you, members of commissions. Now, I've asked you a number of times to create a citizens' ethics review board so that your ordinance could be enforced, and you've never done anything about it. You've never even discussed it. And I'm here to ask you to do that, ask you to create the citizens' review board so that you are answerable to somebody and not just every four years. Now, I've got a few seconds left. In the past, some members have taken the opportunity to use the microphone and ask me questions and make statements after I sat down. So anybody got anything they want to say?
That's five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is Mr. Charles Hicks. If you would come forward, please, and state your name for the record. And you have five minutes.
Thank you, sir. I am Charles Hicks, and my name is on the public interest section is in era. It is my era. I'm here in opposition to item 5 on the agenda, and with your agreement, we'll reserve my time until then.
All right, sir. As Chairman of the Board of Commissioners, I get the honor of introducing individuals and organizations in our community during these meetings. We recognize them for their achievements or their accomplishments, as well as the contributions they make to Glen County. From little leaguers to librarians to champions of our history, we have a lot to be proud of here in Glen. Today is such an occasion, and it makes it nicer when it happens to be one of our own colleagues. We are members of the ACCG, the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia. This association was established to help enhance the role, status, and responsiveness of county governments in the state of Georgia. ACCG offers its members resources regarding policy building, legislative actions, a forum to exchange ideas, and continuing education. One such opportunity is the Lifelong Learning Academy. The Lifelong Learning Academy was created with input from county commissioners who identified courses based on the issues and decision-making challenges regularly faced by county officials. ACCG and the Carl Vinson Institute of Government at the University of Georgia have collaborated for more than two decades to provide county officials with supplemental training and educational tools at the Lifelong Learning Academy. We, as county commissioners, know the changes that are occurring in our community every day, and we're always striving for ways to make it better and for ourselves to be better. Continuing education and training are one way that we can do better. Commissioner Rofalski recently completed the core educational instruction in the Learning Academy, and we commend him for taking the time to further his knowledge, and in doing so, he will better serve Glen County. It is my distinct privilege tonight to present Commissioner Rofalski with this certificate from the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia and the Lifelong Learning Academy. Mr. Rofalski? All right. Do we have any amendments to our agenda tonight?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have an addition to be added to the agenda. Mr. Chairman, I move that we add item number 15 to the published agenda to consider approval of amendment to the Glen County Code of Ordinances, to amend portions of Sections 2-15-3 to change the speed limits on the East Beach Causeway on St. Simons Island and for other purposes.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner O'Quinn, a second by Commissioner Fendig to add item 15 to our general business agenda. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, that is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move on the current agenda, item number 12 from general business, that it be moved to follow commission presentations and announcements and before the consent agenda.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner O'Quinn. Do I hear a second? Have a second by Commissioner Tosterson to move item 12 up to the next item on our agenda. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number 12, general business. Consider amending the occupational sales tax of Glen County to add Section 2-6-41, requiring evidence of payment of personal property abhorrent taxes before the issuance of an occupational tax certificate, and amending Glen County ordinance Chapter 2-14 to add Article 4 regarding mobile home abhorrent taxation to require the local decals showing payment of mobile home abhorrent taxes. And that was brought to us by Commissioner Tosterson at our last meeting and moved to tonight's session so that we had time to get the clarifications and all that we needed. Commissioner Tosterson, do you want to lead this, or you want to pass to Tamara?
I just want to thank the board for deferring it for two weeks and letting us work out the logistics. I've met with Mr. Chapman, and we've been able to work out some slightly changed language, but everybody's in agreement and ready to move forward with this.
Okay.
Do you have anything to say?
No, I don't think you have anything to say.
Any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
I make the motion that we get the regulations for the occupational taxes in Glen County. We have to respect that decision, that we will require evidence of payments for personal property taxes and abhorrent taxes before the issuance of the occupational tax service that. And then, we have orders, Chapter 2-14, to add Article 4 for mobile home taxes, and that will require the local people to pay for mobile homes and abhorrent taxes.
Second. All right. That was mouthful. I have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Rofalski. Is that correct? Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Munson, and thank you, Commissioner Chapman.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda, except for any item that any commissioner wishes to pull for discussion.
I have a motion by Commissioner O'Quinn. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Booker to approve the consent agenda, general business. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. This evening, we have a number of public hearings. Our first one is on an appeal. After receiving a verbal report from county staff regarding the appeal, both persons favoring and persons opposing the relief sought by the appeal shall have an opportunity to address the Board of Commissioners. The persons favoring the relief sought by the appeal shall be invited to speak first, followed by persons opposed to the relief sought by the appeal. Each side shall have a total of 30 minutes each to address the Board of Commissioners. Upon requests made to and approved by the Board of Commissioners prior to speaking, any single individual may speak for up to 15 minutes. All other speakers shall be limited to no more than five minutes unless permitted additional time by the Board of Commissioners. Any allowance of additional time shall not extend the overall 30-minute time limit per side unless more time is granted by the Board of Commissioners to permit a more complete discussion of the issue. Any rebuttal shall be allowed only within the overall time constraints set out herein. Item number 5. The Board of Appeals' decision in case number ZV 5127, the Glenn County Board of Commissioners has received an appeal of an August 11, 2022, decision made by the Board of Appeals of Glenn County in case number ZV 5127. The Glenn County Board of Commissioners will conduct a public hearing to consider the property owner's appeal to the Board of Appeals, August 11, 2022, denial of a variance request, case number ZV 5127, to allow a single-family residence 45 feet in height and to meet other standards of the resort residential RR zoning district. The lot is a substandard lot of record, and Glenn County zoning ordinance Section 507 restricts the residence to 28 feet in height and 1 1/2 stories. The point 12-acre property is located at 826 Parkway, St. Simons Island, parcel number 04-04058, and zone Resort Residential. Venus Morris Griffin, VMG Properties owner and advocate. And Ms. Leaf is here tonight with a report.
Good evening, Commissioner Stephanie Leaf, Community Development Department. This is an appeal of a Board of Appeals' decision that they made in August of this year regarding 826 Parkway on St. Simons Island. The property is located in the resort residential zoning district, but is a substandard lot of record, so that Section 507 the chairman mentioned is what would apply and reduce what could be developed on the property. So as you can see in this, there are platted lots that are located in front of this property. However, that is beach, so this property is beachfront, and this just shows those lots that are not actually visibly there. So the Board of Appeals did deny this project. What they were requesting was to be able to build to the full development standards in the resort residential zoning, which includes a 45-foot height. There is a limit on the number of sleeping rooms, but there isn't, but there's no restriction on the number of stories. And so being beachfront, they would elevate above the flooded elevation. And this property would be allowed to have four sleeping rooms, according to RR zoning, if it was developed fully, and under the 507, I believe it's three, sleeping rooms is what they'd be able to have. So here's just another view of the property. So it is access off Ocean Boulevard, and this is Parkway right here. And just showing that it's a substandard lot, the plat, 1955 plat. And this is a survey of the property. There is a one-story house currently on the lot. And so here's some photos of the site. The property owners have this house on the right side of the screen. As you can see, the house next to it was built prior to the substandard lot of record ordinance being enacted in 2016, so they did build to the full standards in resort residential. And the applicant, when they purchased the property, they have not submitted architectural design plans. They wanted to see if they could get the variance granted before doing so, but they are interested in doing a structure similar to that in terms of the number of stories on the property. So this is just looking from Parkway, looking towards the beach. This is the house that the owner owns right here, and then this is the adjacent property. And so these are just conceptual plans of what the owner would be interested in building if the variance is granted. So there were a number of public comments that were received on this. When the Board of Appeals took up this application, there were three comments in opposition. And then during the public hearing, there were two citizens that spoke in opposition to the request. And then since the appeal has been publicly noticed for this meeting tonight, staff received additional three comments in opposition, and then one comment that was just a question. And those comments have been forwarded to the board. So the Board of Appeals unanimously, 50, denied the decision on August 11, or denied the variance on August 11. The property owner did submit an appeal in a timely manner on September 9. And these are your possible actions. You can reverse the denial, which means you would be approving the variance if you reverse the denial, or affirming the denial, which would be approving, not granting the variance, so agreeing with the Board of Appeals' decision and not granting that variance. So I'm happy to answer any questions. And Chris Jordan from Hunter McLean is here representing the owner tonight. Thank you.
Commissioners, any question before we open the public hearing?
Stephanie, what about, did we talk to any of the neighbors? I mean, I see we got those opposition comments.
Right.
Somebody who's right behind them, how tall is the house right behind them? Can you show that?
Yeah, I don't have photos of an elevation view, but I know, so the house immediately adjacent is a three-story house. There is a mix behind them. They are lower structures, though. I know I've looked at it, but I don't have the image up here.
Do you know if they're two-story or three-story?
Yeah. So it sounds like the applicant has some additional information they can share, but I, yeah, I believe it was more the two-story. So this was the taller one, as well as there's a multifamily pride site just down Parkway, right here, that's taller as well.
All right. This is a public hearing, and as stated, we will listen to those in favor of this appeal first. So anyone that wishes to step forward and speak, we will come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Chris Jordan. Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. I'm here with the property owner, Venus Griffin. And Commissioner Booker, just at the outset, you asked a question about the neighbors. If it's okay with you guys, we've got a panoramic photograph, it's sort of a diagram, it may help orient folks. I know we just saw a few pictures, but if it's okay with you guys, can we circulate these among you folks?
Give them to Chief Batiste.
Thank you, Chief. So as Ms. Leaf just said, right, under the ordinance, Ms. Griffin can build to 28 feet, right? And we are here tonight, and I want to be clear about this at the outset.
Do each of them have a copy?
Sure, there's copies for everybody coming down. So the county's position, the staff's position is she can build to 28 feet, right? And I want to be clear, we are not asking to go to 45 feet at this point. We are here tonight asking for four additional feet. We are asking to go from 28 to 32. And the reason we're asking for 32 is because we've talked to the builder, and under all of these totality of circumstances, the builder's telling us that that's about the bare minimum of what it would take to accommodate Ms. Griffin and her family. And I'll speak about her family briefly. But no matter what everybody else says tonight, ultimately, what we're talking about is four additional feet. We think there's three questions that the board should consider. The first is whether, under these circumstances, is this an unreasonable request from Ms. Griffin? The second question is if the board grants her four additional feet, grants a variance of four feet, will that create problems for the county in terms of future enforcement of the zoning ordinance? And the third question is if she obtains a variance, is that going to unfairly impact her neighbors or disrupt the area cosmetically or aesthetically there on Palmyra? So on the first question, just briefly, these are the circumstances. Ms. Griffin's a single mother of seven kids. This is not the place to get into it, but her story, her backstory is remarkable. She's overcome more than any of us will ever have to face. She's worked really hard to be in a position to buy for her family a house on St. Simons, like a lot of people, it's been a dream of hers for a long time. But she's got a lot of kids. When she looked for property here, when she looked at this property that she purchased, that house is from 1946, it was never going to work for her family. So she knew at the time she bought the property, she was going to have to build up to accommodate her family. And this is the problem. When she purchased it, she thought she could build to 45. Now, why did she think that? We're not saying anybody at the county told her she could build to 45 feet, but she was told she could build to 45 feet. She was told by a couple of folks, and they pointed to this house next door and said, of course you can build to 45 feet, there's one next door. Not only that, they showed her those plans, those architectural plans that were in Ms. Leaf's PowerPoint, that's not the house she wants to build. She was offered to buy those plans from the seller, who said, I'll sell you these for $20,000, and you can build a sister house, because these two properties originally were designed as sister properties. She didn't buy those plans. The only reason any of that matters is because I just want the commission to be aware of what was in her mind, the representations that were made to her. We think that's a fairly unique set of circumstances. And now, here we are, she was upset to realize she's on the wrong side of the ordinance. She's a rule follower, right? We're here to try to do the bare minimum of what it's going to take to make this property work for her and her family. Unfortunately, the information she relied on wasn't accurate. Her mistake was relying on information from people that she was counting on. That's not the county's fault, right? But she's trying to make this work for her family, and by asking for four additional feet, we think that is a reasonable way to proceed on behalf of all of the stakeholders. But obviously, that's not the end of the analysis. The second question that I raised is, from the county's standpoint, is this going to create a problem for future enforcement of the zoning ordinance? She understands that the county has to take the long view here, and that the county has to worry about the slippery slope, as it's sometime called. And that's a totally valid concern. Here's what we would say. There aren't that many substandard lots left that are similarly situated to this on the beach on St. Simons. If you start at the lighthouse, right, and you start on, there's basically three roads that run the beach right there. The first, I believe, is Ogletorpe Avenue, and it runs from like 11th to 7th. Then you've got this road, Parkway, which is from like 6th to 5th, and then Beachview Drive from 5th up to the King and Prince, right? If you go along the beach, or if you drive those roads, most of those houses on the beach are already built, either to their max height or pretty close to it. So the chances that future property owners are going to be similarly situated to Ms. Griffin, we think the universe of those people is pretty small to begin with. And even if somebody does come forward and asks for a variance, they've still got to make a good factual reason for why they're entitled to win. Again, in our view, her circumstances are fairly unique. They may not come up again. I'm not saying the island doesn't have big issues to think about in terms of density, right, in terms of growth. What I am saying respectfully is that the four feet she's asking for, we don't think is likely to move the needle one way or the other in terms of these broader issues that the county has to grapple with on St. Simons. The third question is the neighbors and the neighborhood. The written opposition, we may hear additional remarks shortly, obviously, but the written opposition, part of what these folks are opposing is parking. They're worried about parking. And Parkway's a narrow road with public beach accesses at both points, so I have no problem stipulating that parking is an issue there. But if you allow four extra feet, that allows her to have parking interior underneath the structure, and that helps. So if anybody objects on the basis of a parking concern, I actually think that cuts in favor of allowing her four feet, because at that point, at her property, some of those cars can park underneath the structure. Secondly, the neighborhood itself. As you see on that diagram, there are tall buildings all around her property, and it's like that up and down the beach. So I don't think allowing her to go from 28 to 32 feet, I don't think you can really credibly say that's going to create some detrimental impact for the aesthetics of that area. Third, I think what you're going to hear is a lot of folks who live on the other side of the road say that they have a view that they don't want to lose, and we totally get that. But we need to be clear about what we're talking about here. What we're talking about is something the law calls air rights, and the board may have had to deal with these in the past. They're real things. They can be severed from the land, and they can be bought and sold. And from my review of the record and the title record, nobody here is saying they actually have any sort of air rights above Ms. Griffin's property. She has those rights. These folks may have a view that they like, but they live on the other side of the street, and that's part of what you take into consideration when you buy property. I'm not trying to be callous, I just think that's, I think that's the fact. The other thing I would say is, that's a single-story house from 1946. She can build to 28 under the ordinance, right? If she gets to 28, whatever the view is from across the street, it's already going to be impacted. I think the question is whether four additional feet is really going to matter for purposes of the view across the street. I'm not sure it will, but those same four additional feet matter a lot to her in terms of whether she can make this property work for her and her family. The last thing I'd say, whatever it is you're going to hear in opposition, I would just ask the board to consider whether it is as persuasive now that we are no longer asking to get to 45 feet, we're just asking for four additional feet. So I'm happy to answer any questions. We hope the board will come to find that what we're proposing is a reasonable way forward, that it's unlikely to frustrate the future enforcement of the zoning ordinance, and that it's not going to unfairly impact either the neighbors or the neighborhood. And with that, in the absence of any questions, I'd like to allow Ms. Griffin the chance to address her herself.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
When you went to Board of Appeals, you did not talk about coming down, you went for 45 feet.
That's correct, Commissioner. So personally, I wasn't involved at that point, but the request at the Board of Appeals was 45 feet, and we certainly have deference to the Board of Appeals, and we know the commission does, too. But the fact is, we're in a different place now, right? We're not asking for 45, we're asking for four additional feet above 28.
So 32 feet.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Venus.
State your full name for the record, please.
Venus Morris Griffin, and I'm the owner of Parkway. So first, I would like to say, I would not want your job, after hearing some of the other people speak. So I'm not here to challenge your integrity, or to insult you, or to belittle you to get my way. I'm a rule follower, and I bought this property with the intent of having a place for my seven children and two grandchildren to come. And I bought it on the advisement of people I trusted. I'm a real estate agent, I'm very smart, and I take responsibility for where I'm at. But I wanted to speak before you, because I feel like if you hear the series of events, you will see how any one of sound mind would make the same judgments and conclusions that I did. My agent was very good, and she, when she introduced me to the property, I only had one requirement, which is I wanted it on the beach, because I have small grandchildren, and I have small children as well, I have a 26, 24, 22, 21, 15, 7, seven-year-old, and I have twin grandbabies, and their grandparents live here, which is why we chose this beach, Jeff and Rita Ristetta. And she was very kind and offered me to buy some plans that she had, her current owners had drawn up by a local architect, whose name was Bats Truitt and Associates. And they had drawn a house exactly like this, 45 feet, that was a sister house, and they offered me to buy the plans for $20,000. They had paid him $60,000 for the plans. And I was open to doing that, but I wanted to first see if I could make the two-bedroom, one-bath work. And we tried it for about six months, and if you've got seven kids, you come on vacation, you want to relax, you leave, and you all want to kill each other, it was very counterproductive. So then I started pursuing the building process, and I got in touch with the proper people to get the surveys and do the shoreline, and we didn't, I didn't come to the last hearing because after I looked at the ordinance, I thought my property, because it was an original lot of plat, even though it was substandard, was grandfathered in like I was told my neighbor's property was. And so I did not come, I didn't have representation, because I thought I was following the rules, or I never would have bought the property. And so, of course, I was shocked that we were denied. And so, of course, I was shocked that we were denied. And then I read that ordinance is again, and I'm no attorney, but it seemed that I still, you know, I still think everybody who advised me did it with integrity, and no one tried to take advantage of me. I'm not trying to take advantage of you, but the way the property is now, it just, it won't work for me. And I certainly don't want to come into St. Simon's stomping my feet. I'm not an entitled woman. I come from nothing. I've worked very hard as a single mom of seven children to do this for my family. This is not something I want to do, to have this income-producing property, which I think is what you guys are trying to prevent with the density. I want to, I want my neighbors to like me, and I'm not here to obstruct their view. But again, if I go the 28 feet, that will still cause the same view obstruction for them. But what it will also do for them is it will enhance their properties, because now my guests aren't parking all over the street, they're parking underneath the house and in the front of the house. And as far as St. Simon's goes aesthetically, it will be more beautiful, because, you know, I printed this out, I did this, I'm no professional, but if you look at it, everyone around me is a giant. And, you know, I would like to build the giant, but I understand I can't build the giant. But I would like you to consider letting me just build a two-story house that's 32 feet, so I can get four bedrooms, and we can kind of, we can make it work with, I mean, I had six kids in a two-bedroom for three years. I can make a four-bedroom work with seven children and two grandbabies. But I can't, I think if I'm limited to the one-and-a-half story, we create a big parking problem. It's just not practical, and I'll be forced to make it into a rental property, which is, I've been renting it, because it's not functional for my family now. And so when I come down, I've paid a million dollars, over a million dollars for this beach house, and I'm renting stuff everywhere, trying to get my family into it, and I can't, I'm successful, but I can't afford to do that. So I want this not as a rental property. I don't want to be forced to make it a rental property, and then you do have parking issues. And, you know, renters don't treat property the same way as a primary resident owner would, and I think it would be a win-win for everyone. I think that's it. Again, if my neighbors are here, I've not met them, except for the one with the giant house. I'm not here to cause problems and to upset anyone, or to think that, you know, I'm entitled to this. I think it will be good for the community, and I think it will be more beautiful for people walking on the beach, and, you know, it'll be a family home versus something that's just driven to bring in money. I sold seven properties in Augusta, I'm from Augusta, to buy this property, and I had plenty of income coming in. So that is not why I'm here. I'm here for my children to make this a family home, and thank you for your consideration. Does y'all have any questions for me?
If there's anything at this point, we'll continue. Thank you. We'll continue with those in favor of ZV 5127. If there's anyone else that would come forward to speak in favor of this. Any in favor? Seeing none, hearing none, we will close the portion to speak in favor. We will now open it to anyone who wants to speak in opposition. Anyone that wants to speak in opposition to ZV 5127, please come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Come on, sir. I'm Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, my name is Richard Altman. I was born right here in Glen County, about 10 blocks south in the old hospital. And Ms. Griffin, I am your neighbor, and we won't be enemies no matter what. I promise. I'm too old for that. As a past chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I understand the difficulties that Planning and Zoning and the subsequent appeals boards have, as well as what you all do, with requests such as this. The appeals board and the community development staff investigated this request, and unanimously have recommended to not approve. Whether it's four feet or 40 feet, it was turned down. It is an inferior lot. My lot next door is an inferior lot. My house is a two-story house. I think some of you asked about, it's a two-story house, living quarters upstairs. Downstairs is a garage and open dirt space. It's just empty. My family's owned that property since the 1930s. We lost the house that was there in Dora in '64, and I rebuilt that two-story house that's there right now in 1984. As a retired real estate broker, the information pertaining to what can and cannot be built on any lot is easily obtainable. And the only way a buyer could build over the allowed limit and square footage was through a variance. And the likelihood of a variance in something like this is very difficult to get. Ms. Griffin is a real estate agent, and whoever sold her that lot should have been wise to what was able to be built on that property. I'm asking that you abide by the rules that we have, and as much as four feet would probably help her, the next person that comes in here will ask for five feet. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would come to speak in opposition to ZM 5127, please come forward and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Charles Hicks. I have owned a condominium unit at Sea Point Lodge, which is very near Ms. Griffin's property. And I've been asked by some of my neighbors to speak in opposition to this, but I really can add nothing to what the previous speaker said, except that I agree with him completely.
Thank you, sir. And I appreciate you not being repetitious tonight. This is the first of seven public hearings. So anyone else that would come forward and speak in opposition to ZV 5127? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we will turn it back over to the commissioners for comments, discussion.
I have a question, and I don't know if this may be involving the county attorney. This came before the, I guess, mainland planning, and...
Appeals.
Appeals, excuse me. I apologize. It came before the appeals, but it came before them as a 45-foot structure. Now she's wanting to change that. Should it go back to the Board of Appeals with a new plan for that height, and it be voted on again, and before it comes back to us?
Commissioner, that's a great question, and it can go back to them. You can remand it back down to them.
A little louder, please.
The board can remand it back down to them with instruction to review the four extra feet. It doesn't have to. You can accept the request from the applicant for the four feet, and you can put that into your motion. But the board certainly can remand it back down to the Board of Appeals with a request to have them review that specifically.
Couple thoughts as we go through this. You know, I feel for your position in regards to plans that you may have been presented to you, but that's really a civil matter, I think, between you and whoever offered them to you. I assume that was someone associated with who owned the property before you bought it. St. Simon's has an issue with density, and that's a prime example. What we're dealing with on St. Simon's is houses that were built on small lots for smaller houses. Now you see, the result is someone has taken a substandard lot and bought, or built a very big house beside it. You know, I think it was 2016, Stephanie, when the county put a limit on substandard lots. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, sir.
And the reason we did that was because of what you see there, because of density. When you put structures that big on a small lot like that, it causes a lot of problems. I wish, I see, I consider your home to be a beautiful old home of what St. Simon's used to be when you'd go on the beach, which were small beach houses. So I realize it doesn't work, but I do, from memory, have great fondness of it. I've said this to the other commissioners. I mean, I think that's the biggest thing we have going on on St. Simon's, is what are we going to do, not particularly this situation, but other substandard lots, and the fact that there's just not a lot of room on St. Simon's anymore. And so when you start putting more people in, then you have issues in regards to drainage. We've seen variances in the past at other places that have been granted, that come back to kind of, for lack of a better word, bite us in the backside, because it causes more problems. You know, I can point to one or two of those that have really been some time-consuming issues, where small variance ended up causing some big issues. You know, I would have trouble supporting this. I think the rules are the rules. I think that the buyer is a sophisticated buyer. I think that she has the intellect and the background experience to know that before she buys something, she should thoroughly look into it. So because though there are not a lot of substandard lots on St. Simon's along the beach, there's still a lot of substandard lots on St. Simon's. And the fact is, if we start allowing variances on this one, we're going to have, in my opinion, many more coming forward asking for variances.
I admire your desire and tenacity and circumstances that you've had probably to work through to get to where you're at. I just want you to know, I'm not without compassion for your feeling. I grew up on the beach. In fact, David and I grew up on the beach, just down from one another. After college, I had an opportunity to buy a substandard lot beach house, 700 Beachview Drive, and live in that house. I was single. Then I got married, and then I had a first child, so I went to the county to try to get my elevation up, and that didn't go. And then, in a small house, we had a second child, and I had to make a decision, because there was no room for us. And I wound up having to sell that house and leave my beach dream to live there the rest of my life. So I'm not without empathy to your circumstances. But I agree. One thing that we're trying to change is the variances and the density on St. Simon's. I'm going to make a motion that we deny the request.
Could I comment before you do that?
Sure, well, nobody's seconding it, so it's...
Yeah, I was waiting on the chairman to say if there were any more comments. To me, and I understand that we try not to set a precedent about things, but we do set precedent, and have done it before. I know since the 10 years I've been here. And to me, this situation is pretty unique, and it's really about the four feet, because you talk about density. She already owns the house. She's tried to live in the house, so the density, I mean, we're just talking about really the amount of house, really, and whether it's going to really obstruct the neighbor's view. And I don't know what the difference four feet will make about the view over there. I guess I would have to be, live in their house, or go look out the window. Mr. Altman's house, I guess his is already up high. I'm not sure how many feet it is. But I don't know if four feet makes a difference, to be honest with you, and to create a quality of life for a family. It sounds like a very good one to welcome into this community, because we're talking about the quality of life, but also for the neighbors, because if the park, the four feet can allow the parking, I think that that's going to be helpful. But everything else is still there. I mean, I don't think you can talk about density or anything like that, because she already has the house.
Let me just say a word here. I don't represent St. Simon's, and I wish we could find some folks on the mainland that wanted to build a 45-foot tall house.
Commissioner, will you speak a little closer to the mic?
Thought I had it in my mouth. But anyway, Ms. Griffin, I am so sympathetic to your plight here. I think you are certainly a genuine person. One of the issues we've got as far as precedent is concerned is exactly what Mr. Altman said. The next one's going to be five foot, and that was a powerful statement. The other thing that I've got a problem with is that you may not always own that house. And that house, and I believe if you own that house with your grandchildren and probably great-grandchildren one day, that, you know, it's going to be fine. But you may not own that house, and that house could potentially become a short-term rental. I don't think that's your desire, but again, once that other four feet is put up there, and it's a short-term rental, then it's problematic with traffic and everything else. So we don't have any assurance of that. So anyway, I'm going to shut up now, but I'm going to have a hard time based on what this precedent sets, and what precedent will be set if we allow it to go beyond what our ordinance currently states.
Having spent 13 years on the Board of Appeals, the Board of Appeals is there to look at situations and make a determination. I think if this were back at the Board of Appeals at 32 feet, they would probably approve it. That's my feeling. But I do support, I mean, four feet. I'm sorry, but that's my case. I understand the density and everything else, but I don't think she plans to short-term rental this thing. I think, you know, it's going to be their house. And I agree with Mr. Booker, with Commissioner Booker. So that's where I stand.
Yeah, but I think when you talk about variances, I mean, we can point to, when you issue variances, then you get other problems. And so that would probably be my response to that. And the Board of Appeals, you know, I look to them, the way they hear things, and look to what they have to do. I think I've had a pretty good track record of supporting what they bring before us. So in this particular case, the ask was 45 feet. Now, I don't know, Mr. Attorney, maybe you can speak to this, and if we deny this, can they then go back and apply for one at 32, or do they have to wait a while, or what?
There's no waiting period. They certainly could go back and request that variance be given. I think the staff would likely deny it based on the ordinance, and they could go back to the Board of Appeals and come back before you.
Could you repeat that again? I think we had trouble hearing you.
Certainly. They can. They can go back through the process at four additional feet and reapply for those additional four feet.
So there's no waiting period for them to go back if they choose to want to come back with a plan at 32 feet?
I don't...
Not that I'm aware of.
And then it would still come back to the Board of Commissioners at that time?
If they deny it again.
So what's before us tonight is a variance to go to 45 feet. Is that correct?
To have, yeah. 45 would be the max, so they may still do a 32-foot. But the variance is for up to 45 feet, as well as all the other restrictions of the resort residential. So they would not be limited to a story and a half, and they would not be limited to that 28 feet or three bedrooms.
But the board can give...
We can give that. We can make it 32-foot.
You can.
Yeah, that's definitely an option, is if there's an appetite to reverse the denial. It could be a condition that 32 feet is the maximum height.
We talk an awful lot in our community about short-term rentals and the growing opposition to short-term rentals. But, you know, whether a house is 28 feet, or 32 feet, or 45 feet, doesn't determine whether or not it'd be a short-term rental. So I don't really see where that comes in. So... So, uh, for that argument, I, you know, I, I couldn't speak in opposition of this. Uh, I think it's a decent compromise myself, so...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we affirm the denial of case number ZV 5127 by the Board of Appeals. I think, uh, I'd make that motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Quinn, a second by Commissioner Brunson, to affirm the denial of the Board of Appeals. Everyone understand what we're voting on. So, if you affirm the denial of the Board of Appeals, please raise your right hand. And if you are voting...
That's three.
...that voted in favor of affirming the Board of Appeals' decision. If you're against that affirmation, or vote in favor of allowing the appeal to be verified at a maximum 32 feet.
Can we get a clarification on that, Mr.? I mean, basically, the motion failed, correct?
Well, the three, three, uh, were in favor of denying the, um, the application. So, we'll need to, everyone that's against that will vote, uh, in the contrary, and then negative. So, we're just, we just need a, a vote from the other opposition, and then a new vote to approve it, if the board wishes to do that.
All right. And, and, you know, just trying to keep the language clear, uh, the motion was made to uphold the Board of Appeals' decision on ZM, uh, ZV 5127. We had three that voted to affirm the appeal. How many voting the other way? That is four.
Okay.
Yep, all right. So, that is three to affirm, four against.
So, now the motion's failed, and it's before the board for whatever action you wanna take with it now.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reverse the denial of case number ZV 5127 by the Board of Appeals, but put a height limit of 32 feet on the structure.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Rafoski to reverse the denial of case number ZV 5127, and a second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor of voting for the reverse of the denial, please raise your right hand. That is four in favor of reversing those against. It's three against. So, uh, that makes it official, the, we have reversed that case number ZV 5127 with a maximum height of 32 feet. That was a lot of fun.
Good luck, Ms. Griffin.
And, and you do not have to stay, you're, you're not gonna be punished by having to sit through the other six, so...
And congratulations.
If you would go get us a pizza and a couple of cokes, that'd be great. Yeah, yeah, you might wanna take, might wanna take these gentlemen with you for...
Your neighbors.
Yeah. All right. Uh, public hearing land use. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position, and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. Your cooperation is greatly appreciated. Item number six, ZM 5196, Town Square Plan Development District Amendment. Consideration of an amendment to the Town Square Plan Development PD District, case number ZM 2158, to add parcels 03-00912, 145 Carter Drive, and 03-26623 to the PD. Both parcels are currently located in the R12 One Family Residential Zoning District. The Town Square PD permits a mixture of residential, assisted living, and nursing care, office and commercial uses. Vasekate VC Dirt LLC, applicant and owner. And again, Ms. Leaf.
Thank you. This is ZM 5196 Town Square. Uh, so this is a, um, amendment to a plan development text to add additional property to the Town Square PD. Uh, so they, um, currently allow, uh, a, the PD allows a, a mix of, um, different residential uses, including multifamily at 16 units per acre, assisted living and nursing care, and office and commercial uses. Uh, the property in question is, uh, is former City of Brunswick Oxidation Pond, and they do plan to, to keep that pond there for, um, drainage purposes. Uh, so this is the property. Um, this is kind of Chapel Crossing, Altama area. Altama is, um, to, to the right of the screen. Uh, Chapel Crossing is kind of up this direction. So, the, um, there's an apartment complex under construction, um, off of Chapel Crossing behind here, and so, um, that's also part of Town Square, and this'll be additional property added to it. So, this just shows, um, their proposed plan for it. And the Mainland Planning Commission, um, did vote unanimously to recommend approval of this rezone. Uh, these are your possible actions. And Brian Hunt with Robert Civil Engineering is here representing the applicant tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Leaf, would you put the, the, right there?
Sure.
On the right-hand side of the screen. Is that Scranton Connector?
So, Scranton Connector is, uh, let's see, is it down this way? Hold on, let me pull that up.
I'm trying to get my orientation there.
I know, is that, yeah, it's, um... Is it down this way? Yeah, I know, Altama is over this direct, this Scranton Connector, is it up here? Oh, down here, okay.
Not, not...
Oh, yeah, this, down in this area, okay.
Not Altama Connector, Scranton Connector.
Scranton Connector, yes. So, the Y, the YMCA is kind of what, right, is it down here? Sorry, we don't have a, our zoomed out view.
Give me an idea where Chapel Crossing is.
So, Chapel Crossing is up here.
Walker Road, actually, right?
Let's see, where's Walker? Okay, Walker is over this way. Yeah, yeah, Chapel Crossing is here. Um, the apartment, I know there's been, there's been some clearing on the property up in this area, that there's been some calls about, um, clearing on Chapel Crossing, and that, that's this area up here.
All right. I'm not exactly sure where I am. This is, was this the oxidation pond that, uh, JWSC had at one time?
I know it's a City of Brunswick. It might have been Joint Water as well.
Okay.
Um, oh, the new Altama Elementary School is right down here. That gives some reference.
Okay. Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
I think, I think Scranton Connector is where William Leagann's office is.
Right.
That back gate.
Right. I was just trying to get my bearings to it, so, still clears mud, but go ahead. Uh, Commissioners, anything before we open the public hearing? Okay, this being a public hearing for ZM 5196, any that wishes to come forward and speak in opposition? Those that wish to speak in opposition to ZM 5196, please come forward and state your name for the record. Move quickly, we've got a lot of these. All right, seeing no one, hearing no one, we'll close the opposition to ZM 5196. Any that want to speak in favor of ZM 5196, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. Brian Hunt with Robert Civil Engineering just asked that you, um, approve this as presented. I'm here for questions you may have.
I like the brevity of that. Thank you, sir. Uh, anyone else that wants to come up and speak in favor of ZM 5196? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, Commissioners, we're back to you.
Mr. Chairman, uh, based on the Mainland Planning Commission unanimous vote, I'm going to move we approve the proposed zoning decision.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Brunson to approve, second by Commissioner Rafoski. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number seven, ZV 5225, Bucce's Sign Variance. Request for a variance to sign regulations outlined in Sections 808-2 and 810-3, which regulates maximum signs, signs and maximum area at 6900 Highway 99, Zone PD. ZM 2824, parcel ID 03-27927, Bucce's Brunswick LLC, Stan Beard Jr., owner. And again, Ms. Leaf.
Thank you. Um, this is zoning variance, uh, for the Bucce's, um, signage, for their new Bucce's at Highway 99 and Exit 42. Um, so, sign variances are the only variances that do go directly to the Board of Commissioners. They do not go to the Board of Appeals. So, that's why you all are seeing this tonight. Um, it has not gone to the Board of Appeals. So, this is a plan development. However, they, um, their signage code refers to our freeway commercial zoning district. And so, uh, when they, um, ask for our feedback, um, on their signage plan, there's a number of areas that it is more than what our current sign ordinance allows. Um, so just as summary of that, um, our sign ordinance for freeway commercial is no more than three signs per business. Um, they are proposing five signs total. Um, their max, there's a maximum of 500 square feet of signage for the site. Um, they're proposing, um, 1,794 square feet. Uh, their freestanding signage, so they have a pylon sign, that, um, pole sign that's proposed. Um, our code says that the maximum for a pole sign is 250 square feet, and they're proposing 616 square feet. Uh, so this is the, the property that, um, we're likely are familiar with. Um, so they, they did submit, um, why they feel there's a, there's a hardship, um, you do this, do the size of the property, the size of the business. Um, they felt, given that, that there was additional signage required for folks to be able to, um, find their business and get around their site. So, this is just an excerpt from their plan development text. And these are the standards, standards of evaluation for variances. Um, this is in our, from our zoning code. So, we do point to if there's a hardship, um, that, that's on the site, um, or any other kind of, you know, peculiar or particular conditions that, um, would, would, uh, mean a variance would be needed. So, this is their proposed, um, signage plan. So, as they, as you come into the site, there is a pylon sign, um, that would be visible from, um, Highway 95, or Interstate 95, and this is just locations of their signage. And then, um, this is what they're, they're proposing for the site. Uh, this is their, their pylon with the, the Bucce's Beaver. And these are the elevations showing their wall signage that's proposed. Um, we did have some questions about, um, Bucce's and other locations, and how, um, how it did compare, if they needed variances, or if they met the sign codes for the locations. Um, we looked at St. John's County, Florida, just south of Jacksonville, um, and they did get a variance, uh, for signage in that community. Um, St. John's, um, their, their regulations for the site are, are kind of similar to, to Glen County's, um, codes for the property, so it was kind of a good comparison to make. So, they did get a, a variance in that community. And so, they actually had a, um, so they were doing a, a total of a 488 square feet of signage total that was a variance over the 200 allowed. So, these are your possible motions, um, for the zoning variance, and Mr. Stan Beard, um, from Bucce's is here representing the application tonight. Thank you.
Commissioners, any comments before we go to the public hearing?
Sure. Yeah, so they do meet the height requirement. Um, the height allowed, um, for this zoning district is 145 feet, and I want to say they're maybe at 125. Yeah, 125. So, they, they are below the height limit that we have. Uh, their, their pylon will be on, on their property. Um, yeah, this is their, their entrance road into the site, so this would be on their property, but vis, visible as you're coming, you know, off the interchange.
But that's, that's considered 95, though. That's an off-ramp right there?
No, this is their access road.
Stephanie, I believe you're wrong.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, that is the ramp, okay.
Okay, yeah, so that'll, that would be considered 95.
Okay.
That, that was my question, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Any, anything else, Commissioners, before we open the public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing for ZV 5225. Anyone that wishes to come forward and speak in opposition to this Bucce's sign variance, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening. I am Susan Inman. I'm mid-coast advocate at 100 Miles. We're a nonprofit organization that protects Georgia's 100-mile coast through advocacy, education, and civic engagement. I want to thank you for the opportunity to comment on the sign variance for the travel center. This is the first time the public has gotten to comment on this project during a county commission meeting. This project was simply approved during a Mainland Planning Commission meeting, even though this transformational, transformational development is so large that it required Glen County to, to complete a developments of regional impact study. There seems to be a step missing in this county process when a self-named world's largest convenience store project that has 120 gas pumps, 80 bathrooms, 530 parking spaces, and builds over 135 square feet on their parcel, never comes in front of you for public comment or for a vote. This is important because this type of transformational growth does affect other county businesses. The small businesses are currently functioning on a small number of staff and limited hours due to not having enough people to fill the already 2,000 open retail jobs. We also can't forget the East Coast Greenway, the state's wildlife management areas, and the Goliglichi Heritage Corridor, which are community businesses that depend on this area to not be paved over. Tonight, this one company that's worth $500 million and has already received a $3 million loan from the county is claiming a hardship of their own design. And unlike the example that was shown to you in the photos, in the application, they're not a building that holds multiple companies. They are one company asking for three times the amount of aggregate signage, over double the freestanding signage maximum, and, and proposing to place the high-rise sign furthest away from their building as they can. Also, when I read the word hardship, I, I can't think of, uh, I can't help to think how the size of this development is gonna impact the taxpayers' costs on providing water, sewage running to this property, maintenance of the roads of the 20,000 trips per day to this property, and the ground and stormwater management with the wetlands being so near. So, in closing, I'm asking you to stay consistent with the county code, as you did recently with the Dollar Tree on St. Simon's, and deny the quest, the request as proposed tonight. Thank you all for your service. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would come up and speak in opposition? Please state your name for the record, please.
My name is Laura Jenks Durand. Um, I also want to thank you for the opportunity to comment on the sign variance. I am in opposition of the sign variance, the 73,000-square-foot structure with 120 gas pumps. They're declaring a hardship that they cannot have the sign that they want, which is over double the freestanding signage minimum. At what point is big, large enough? What about the hardship that the country's largest convenience store will place on the local businesses that will lose business or go out of business? What about the hardship that the country's largest convenience store will place on the environment? Now, there are some signs that I am in favor of. Um, they are between Exit 70 and 42. Uh, they are advertising the Golden Isles. Silence is golden, is one of them. Good for your soul is another sign. Spoiled by the unspoiled. Go at your own pace. And another perfect day. All these phrases are used to describe our beautiful preserved Golden Isles, and I really ask that you deny the request of this sign variance. Thank you.
Anyone else that would come up and speak in opposition? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion. Anyone that wants to come up and speak in favor of ZV 5225? Please state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Stan Beard, Director of Real Estate for Bucce's. And, uh, appreciate you hearing this variance request. I, uh, uh, staff was great in helping me walk through this, and I'm here to answer I will say, uh, just as a, as a, kind of a, an opening, um... I will say, just as a, as a kind of an opening, we sometimes run into this issue where signage is, much like St. John's, is tied to, there is an implied scale matching that a sign ordinance often tries to do, where, and this is one that's like it, where they say you may have X amount of signage for X amount of square feet, or X amount of linear feet of something. And then, they say up to a maximum of. And what our argument usually is, is that, I mean, we are big. It's a large building. And our signage is perfectly in scale with such a large building. You know, if you use your ordinance as it's written, and it says, you know, you can have 25% of your total front wall space as signage. Well, because our wall space on the front side of the wall is 11,000 square feet, 25% of that would be well over what we're asking for, for all of the signage on all of the property. So, from a scale, from a scale perspective, we do not think that we are outside the lines of the implied measurement that this type of requirement states. The other issue, as it was pointed out, is that we are not six different businesses. We are one. And so, what often many large-scale buildings like this can do is they say, well, we're not, you know, we're not just one business. We're a gas station. We're a coffee store. We're a burger joint. We're, you know, a cell phone store or something. And if, can I go to an exhibit? How do I do that? I want to go to that one right there. So, that example A up top is kind of what I'm referring to, is that here's a building that is obviously smaller than ours, but there, just on one, from one street view, you see six different signs. Each side of that building has those same six signs. But they are allowed under your ordinance because the square footage all matches. And so, my, you know, what I argue as my hardship is that, is that we, you know, we're a Buc-E's. We just say we're Buc-E's. But inside, we sell, you know, barbecue sandwiches. We sell coffee. We sell electronic stuff. We sell soft merchandise. But we sell it as a Buc-E's, and everyone knows us as a Buc-E's. We don't, we don't have to tack on other items that we sell in the Buc-E's. So, again, it's just a, it's kind of an ministerial issue with an ordinance that we run into that we, you know, we try to work through. And as far as the pole sign goes, the freestanding sign, I mean, you know, examples B and C, and there are hundreds of other examples on I-95 of tall, large pole signs. And we're no different. We brand our, we, our popularity is driven by our branding, and when people see a Buc-E's sign, they understand that, what they're going to get. And it's important for folks who are traveling, I don't, you know, whether or not they have Waze, or Siri, or whomever telling them where to go, they, the brain wants to see a sign. And when they see the sign, they know that they should exit. And so, we're no different than any other folks on the freeway. And I do, I got to remind everybody, this is, I mean, this is a freeway commercial zoned property, and so, it's a PD, and we were just unfortunately unable to get in the PD design process. But, so here we are. I'm here to answer questions. We, I can answer questions about the signage, or I can answer questions about, you know, small businesses that we affect. We don't. If, you know, we pay $17, $18, $19 an hour. If other businesses want to do that, they're welcome to it. We are a good neighbor, we believe. 80% of our customers come from well away from Glen County or Brunswick. We don't put the local guy out of business. We are its own kind of mechanism, and we are a destination, and we have all sorts of good stuff inside, and so, we're just trying to make sure everybody knows about it.
All right. Thank you, sir.
You bet.
We're still in our public hearing. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in favor of ZV 5225? To speak in favor. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we're back to you.
Mr. Chairman. We don't have a motion, so I would recommend that we approve ZV 5225 as presented.
I have a motion by Commissioner Foskey, a second by Commissioner Tosterson, to approve ZV 5225. All in favor, or any other discussion?
Look forward to Buc-E's coming to town. That'll save me trips down to St. John's. When we heard you were coming to town, we drove down there to look at the facility. It was very clean, very immaculate, and your brisket was off the charts. And my wife makes me drive down there regularly to have an afternoon date eating brisket, so it will save me mileage to have you come to town. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of ZV 5225, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number eight, CUP 5203, R&amp;R Tire Wawa Conditional Use Permit. Consideration of a Conditional Use Permit, CUP, for an automobile service station in the Highway Commercial HC zoning district. This applicant is proposing a Wawa convenience store and fuel station at 4374 and 4344 Community Road, 4354 and 4318 New Jessup Highway, parcel numbers 03-09152, 03-09153, 03-09151, and David Smith from Kimley Horn, agent for Jim McMillan's Real Estate Group, applicant, and A.H. Tosterson III, owner. And again, Ms. Leaf.
Thank you. This is CUP 5203. Currently, there are R&amp;R Tire site and auto dealership, but it's a proposed Wawa convenience store and fuel station. So, the project that's before you is for the use as an automobile service station. So, it's a zoned highway commercial zoning, and automobile service station is a conditional use in this zoning district. So, that is why it is before you. It did go to the Mainland Planning Commission as well. There's also a site plan application that was approved by the Mainland Planning Commission, and that's, of course, only valid if the Board approves the conditional use permit. So, the property location is at the corner of Community and Highway 341, New Jessup. So, the Parker Station is across Community in this location, and then across 341 is the Friendly Express, and then this is the location here. So, this is their proposed site plan. They do have two access points. This is a full access they're showing on Community, and then they do have a ride-in, ride-out they're showing on 341. These are, of course, both roadways controlled by Georgia Department of Transportation, so any driveway permits, they would have to get through GDOT, and they'll look at those access points. And then, this is the proposed convenience store, and then the fuel pumps up front. Just a little more zoomed in. And these are the elevations of the proposed Wawa. These are the canopies and the fuel pumps. And the MPC did review this on October 4th, and they unanimously recommended approval of the conditional use permit. And David Smith from Kimley Horn is here representing the applicant tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leaf. Commissioners, any discussion on this before we open the public hearing? All right. This is a public hearing for CUP 5203, R&amp;R Tire Wawa Conditional Use Permit. Anyone that wishes to come up and speak in opposition to CUP 5203, please come forward and state your name for the record. Any to speak in opposition? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion. Anyone that wants to come up and speak in favor of CUP 5203, please come forward, state your name for the record, please.
I'm David Smith with Kimley Horn, and I'm representing as the agent for this one. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
All right. If you'll just stand by, please. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we are back to you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the proposed Conditional Use Permit.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Brunson, and a second by Commissioner Foskey to approve CUP 5203. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is six in favor.
And Mr. Chairman, I accuse myself.
And one abstention, recusal. All right, that carries. Item number nine, ZM 5192, 118 Red Bird Lane Rezone. Request to rezone a .03, I'm sorry, 0.3-acre lot located at 118 Red Bird Lane, St. Simons Island, parcel number 04-02919, from Mobile Home District, MH, and R9 One Family Residential, do entirely a R9 One Family Residential, to allow single-family dwelling unit. John Burns, agent for Stephen Bean, Ridgeland Ventures LLC, owner and applicant. And Ms. Leaf, you're the popular one tonight.
Thank you. So, there are actually three applications along Red Bird Lane, so I'll give, to try to be more efficient with time, I'll give one presentation to cover all of them. But staff is recommending that you do do three separate public hearings, just to have the record be clear on all of these. So, the first one is ZM 5192, and so, we have got all three of the addresses of 118, 120, 122 Red Bird Lane, but these are all separate applications. So, Red Bird Lane is located on St. Simons Island. This is off of Old Demery, so Red Bird is a private access easement. This does back up to the Mobile Home Park on St. Simons, and there are three lots. One of the questions that had been still in play during the IPC meeting was whether these were considered lots of record. Maybe they were lots of record considered prior to 1966. We have since the applicant is confirmed, and we've reviewed the deeds. So, there are 1940s deeds that show that there are three lots of this location. So, they are considered lots of record. And so, two of these lots are entirely in the Mobile Home District. One of the lots is split zoning between the two R9 as well as Mobile Home, and they are looking to rezone all of these to R9. Their intent is to do a single-family home on each one. Given the lot sizes, they, under R9, they wouldn't have enough room to subdivide any further, so it would just be one unit, or one single-family unit per lot. So, there are some questions about whether there would be a potential use as a Mobile Home zoning district. And Mobile Home zoning, you do have to have a minimum of three acres to do Mobile Home Park. You know, if this property was acquired by the adjacent Mobile Home Park, it could be added on to, and there could be mobile homes on the site. But for these three lots to be standalone as a Mobile Home Park, they don't meet the minimum lot size to do that. So, there is, you know, some question of that.
Could they put a single mobile home on each lot?
The way the zoning is, is that it should, it's supposed to be a Mobile Home Park, not necessarily a single family, or a single mobile home.
What's the definition of a park?
Ah, I mean, we do, I mean, it is kind of considered more of a, you know, subdivision within it. But that's a good question. And we do have, I mean, there's eight units per acre that could be there.
So theoretically, you could put five or six mobile homes there? Is that?
You could, but we do say a minimum of three acres for a park. And I know when we've looked at that term and others, like such as an RV park, we've basically said you can't, either you have the three acres for a park, or you can't have that use at all.
Okay, continue, please.
Okay, sure. So, this is just a survey of this particular lot. The Island Planning Commission did review this on September 20th. They did unanimously recommend approval with one Commissioner absent. They did have a couple of conditions that they recommended to you all tonight. One was that there would be a utility plan that would have to be submitted at building permit stage, and that was in response to some comments from neighbors about water and sewer and drainage. There were some drainage concerns out there because these are infill lots. And then, they wanted to ensure that there was only one residence per lot that would be allowed. So, those were the conditions that they recommended to you all, if you would like to add those tonight. And then, as I mentioned, there's two additional, two additional lots. So, at this point, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. John Burns is here representing the owner, if you have any questions of him.
Stephanie, I was, this property, if you could go back to the map where it shows the three lots. That property, a couple of questions, it's a private easement, is that correct? And how many, how many homes can be on a private easement? I thought it was limited to a certain number.
It is a max of four, and that would, that comes into play if there is like a subdivision of another parcel. That's when we say, you know, if you already have four or more accessing off of that, we would not allow another lot to come off of that. But these are considered existing, you know, non-conforming lots, and they do have an access easement for the property, so that would be still recognized as access to those lots.
And then, the, the fall of that land where the yellow is, as you come in, is high, and it goes, as it goes back, it goes down. And it was hard for me to see, but I've been told there is a drainage ditch. If you look at the backmost lot, that goes, goes that way. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm trying to think. Well, the survey shows it. Yeah, I believe there is, and I know County Engineer Paul Andrews had looked into some of this, too, so he may be able to address that.
Was that?
Yeah, I think that's back there.
There's like a partial ditch, is that correct, Paul?
I'm sorry, sir.
Is that a partial ditch right there? The ditch doesn't go all the way down these, behind these properties. It kind of starts behind this third one, is that correct?
What, if you will, right here is the separation between subdivisions. This subdivision had an easement platted along the rear of the properties on their, we, the county uses that easement in areas to include ditches and pipes that are maintained by the county. This is a six-lot subdivision, six-eight-lot subdivision. It didn't, it didn't have the same drainage easement on it. This easement, like I said, in this area, we don't maintain it. It appears that there's a low swale there, a low area that kind of drains from east to west. A lot or two over is where there's a drainage pipe that carries most of the water out of the, out of the Mobile Home Park, and up through County Park that is one block up this way, and through those, through the lakes in the subdivision there. It's north of Druid Oaks. It's the subdivision behind the gates off of. It's the subdivision behind the gates off of Simon.
And ultimately goes out to the marsh.
And then out the marsh, the Bloody Marsh Curve.
Okay, then my question is, and the question that's been posed to me is, this area here doesn't have, there's like a swell at some point, it's not really kept up. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so is, are we going to require these three lots to tie in drainage to go to this, this area where we do maintain? The concern I'm hearing is this low area, if it's not maintained properly, it's just going to capture a lot of water. And just my, going back and look at it, it is a low area back there.
Yeah, so the IPC had recommended the condition about having that drainage plan submitted so that we would have that opportunity to look at it. That's not something that we typically have the ability to always look at at building permit stage. So this, that was going to be an added requirement for them. So that's something.
But did the requirements for the drainage require? I know sometimes it's like each lot comes and makes a decision, you know, this is my drainage plan. But was the drainage as proposed by IPC to include all three lots kind of in a comprehensive drainage plan for all three lots as opposed to individually?
No, I think that would be a good way to handle it. But that was not the specific condition of IPC. So you could have a situation where just one permit comes in at a time, and it would be handled. But if that's a requirement that all three are looked at together, that's, that'd be a good idea.
Has it been confirmed that that's a recorded easement?
It, it's recorded. It wasn't, it wasn't part of the dedication to the county or to the public. It's, it's on their recorded subdivision plat. It's not just, the one I saw didn't describe what the easement was for, but the county has drainage utilities in it.
Okay, so that's where the, that's where all the utilities would run in that easement as well?
This is, this is, this easement that runs on the backside in between lots. All we have in there is drainage.
So where are the utilities going to come from?
Oh, for Redbird. I would expect they're currently being served via Redbird.
I received a letter from the owner of 119 Redbird Lane. And I got it this afternoon. She is saying that there is no utility easement that runs behind these three properties. And it's an 18-foot easement, and she is, owns all the rights to that easement. And the proposed developer is not, asked her for any permission to run utilities or nor is there agreement. And she doesn't have a plan to allow it. So I just, got this this afternoon.
Do you have the address of the?
Ms. Laura Cammon, C-A-M-M-O-N. Her address is 119 Redbird Lane.
Mr. County Attorney, if we have a recorded easement for utilities and drainage that can't be denied, is that correct?
This is a county easement, right?
I don't know.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Is this a county easement or is it a private?
Well, the plat up there reads Redbird Lane, 18-foot private right-of-way.
Right, yeah, that is not a county easement. That's, yeah, they submitted a copy of their, their private easement for access. But it says access, I don't know if it refers to utilities. Maybe Mr. Burns can elaborate more on that. I recall it just being an access easement.
Yeah, she says it's an 18-foot easement. And she owns the rights over that easement. So there's no utility service available. I mean, I hate, sometimes you get these last-minute shots, but that's what comes in. Probably so. I mean, I think it's a legal issue that needs to be clarified unless the attorney has information. I don't know, I just got the email this afternoon.
Commissioner, this is a new issue for, for me, for us. And so I'd have to look at the actual easement to make an opinion on that and what it does and doesn't do.
I'm looking for the email, hold on.
Mr. Chairman, I think before you have the public hearing, I think it might be beneficial for everybody to get everybody on the same page. And let's come back and make sure the easements are in place and there's no question about who owns what and what the county has access to. I make a motion that we defer this until the, till further determination in regards to the easements and what access Glen County has to the property as well as utility easements.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner O'Quinn, a second, I think, by Commissioner Tosterson first. So a motion and a second to defer items. Let me make sure where I am. Items nine, 10, and 11, ZM 5192, ZM 5193, and ZM 5194, defer until a later date. Do we need a date specific, Mr. Attorney?
That is recommended.
Do we need two weeks or 30 days?
I believe quite a bit of this, I mean, would be what the applicant has available to be able to provide.
We, we need to be able to check out the legalities of the claim that was made. Certainly, you wouldn't want lots that you couldn't have access to. Perhaps you're already on them, I don't know. But we're going to have to settle this as a, as a legal matter for ownership. Correct, Mr. Attorney? Before we could, could act on it. We have a motion and a second. Before we take the vote, do you? We didn't open the public hearing, so be clear that when this comes back to us, we will repost and have the public hearings. But if you would like to speak to the issue, since we read, read a letter into the record, feel free to come forward, state your name for the record. And keep in mind that this is not the public hearing now, but, but we'll just welcome your comment. That is appropriate, correct, Mr. Attorney?
My name is John Burns. I'm the manager of the applicant. The question that I was prepared to address tonight had to do with the zoning, the change in zoning from MH to R9. Is that no longer an issue before the board?
It, it is an issue, but access has to be determined. And, and part of the, you're, you're very correct in that if you wish to pursue, we could take a vote. But, Mr. Attorney, we'll defer to guidance.
That is the issue, Mr. Burns, that as far as the rezoning goes. I think the board has the absolute option to defer this. If you want more information on, on that easement, to clarify that before we take the vote. But I mean, the rezoning is the issue or is the matter before you tonight. But access and the easement and the issue and the email the board received, I think is certainly pertinent to that decision. And so I think deferral is appropriate if you want.
We have a motion and a second to defer. Is there any other discussion regarding this?
Do we need to have a date certain for the defer?
I think a date certain is good. I think the first meeting in November is appropriate. I, I just need to see the actual easement or, you know, review that claim. And it won't take me.
Two weeks would be sufficient. So amendment to the motion. Who made the motion?
I made the motion to defer until we had clarification regarding the owner, ownership of the easements by Glen County and utility easements as claimed by some of the neighbors. And I would, I withdraw that motion. I will resubmit it. Can I do that, Mr. Chair, Mr. Attorney? So the motion that I now make is that we defer this to the first meeting in November.
November 3rd.
November 3rd. To allow staff to determine what, what drainage and utility easements are available to these properties, access, as well as claims by neighbors to those easements. And at that time, we will address the rezoning.
All right, so we, we have a revised motion by Commissioner O'Quinn, second by Commissioner Tosterson. Any other discussion on this? And Mr. Attorney, are we on firm ground? All right, seeing no other discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. These items are deferred. Item number 13, consider approval of a local option sales tax, lost certification of distribution, and an intergovernmental agreement by and between Glen County, Georgia, and the city of Brunswick, Georgia, regarding traffic signal maintenance and animal services. And it's got my name on this sucker, so I'll take the first shot at it. So, over the past several months, Glen County and the city of Brunswick entered into negotiations for the local option sales tax lost through a cooperative effort between the city and the county. We came to a determination of what that split should be. We have entered our MOU agreement and are ready to sign that. We agreed on the percentages that the city gets versus what the county gets. That's in our resolution. Again, we want to thank the city for their cooperation in these efforts. A lot of work went in numerous negotiation times. So that is, that is what I have to say about it. Mr. Attorney, do you want to add?
Mr. Chairman, that's well, well put. The percentages are, just for, for the record, are 73% for the county and 27% for the city. That is included in the agreement. There's also a certificate of distribution that will be submitted to the state of Georgia if this is approved. The city approved the same agreement last night. So upon approval tonight, this evening, we'll get the document signed, a little bit of insight into the actual agreement. The city will continue to perform traffic signal maintenance for the city traffic lights. It'll also continue to provide animal services inside the city. What has changed from the last 10 years is the city will, or the county will no longer provide services for recreation within the city. The city will take that over. We are going to bring forward an amendment to the existing agreement, so the city will actually take that over after Labor Day in, in September. So that'll be coming to you at your next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Mr. Fallon, do you want to add?
As, as Mr. Mumford mentioned, we'll continue to work with the city throughout the course of 2023 to get us to the, the actual, all the way through Labor Day of next year. It's when the pool season ends, beach season ends. But that's when the lifeguard service would end for us. And, and we will work with the city to gradually turn over all of those functions at the, at the park.
All right, does anyone else want to speak to this? Mr. Booker?
Yes, I, I would just like to thank my fellow commissioners and our county attorney and our, our new county manager for this process. We, we did go into some, it, it got intense, but it was, it was a fair and family process. We were, we were professional, but very supportive of each other in trying to get to the percentages. We had real discussions. It wasn't a rubber stamp kind of situation, but we really came together for all concern, all of our citizens. And I just want to compliment our team for that process. The chairman who led us. And, and I, as I, I said, I knew county manager. I, I thought he was setting the table, did a very good job.
Yeah, I'd like to comment also, just want to thank the staff. I want to thank the county attorney and Mr. Fallon, who kind of walked into the process kind of late, but did a great job of being organized and ready for those discussions. I want to thank Commissioner Neal and Commissioner Booker, who, the three of us were able to have some of those discussions with informal discussions at times with the mayor. I want to thank the mayor. He did a very good job of leading the city. I want to thank also Ms. McDuffie. I know when Mike Stewart was here, the mayor and I, and Mike Stewart and Regina first began having discussions in January. And I think that's what you do as a community. You start having discussions far in advance so that when it comes time to have some real discussions, you've built some relationships. So to the city, I thank each of them and every one of them for their willingness to come to the table and have a, have a good discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Well, I'll take a point of privilege and, and just say of Mr. Fallon. He came on board. I've seldom seen anyone that can soak information up like a sponge, disseminate it, and, and run with it as quickly as Mr. Fallon has been able to do so since he joined us. And just take, take this opportunity to say thank you for what, not only what you did through our lost negotiations, but how you're working through the county to, to steer us on a, on a positive path. With that, do I entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the local option sales tax certificate of distribution, intergovernmental agreement by and between Glen County, Georgia, and the city of Brunswick, Georgia, regarding traffic signal maintenance and animal services.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner O'Quinn, a second by Commissioner Booker and Rafalsky. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number 14, consider adopting a resolution in opposition to docket number NOAA-NMS-2022-0022 and the proposed changes to the North Atlantic rightwell vessel speed rule. Commissioner Fendig?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. NOAA extended its hearing period on proposed changes to the North Atlantic rightwell vessel speed rules. In reviewing these rules and getting calls from not only the recreational boat industry, but the shipping industry, and being very intimately familiar with this issue myself, I felt that it was important that the county represent the potential. If the rules were enforced as is, the billions and billions of dollars of, of job loss and economic impact to our county and our coast. So appreciate that we want to pass a resolution opposing the docket in NOAA and National Marine Fisheries Service for 2022 and the proposed changes to the North Atlantic rightwell vessel speed rule. Interestingly enough, today, Buddy Carter and Warnock and our state delegation in Washington put out an article that they agree that the rule changes were needed. And we're going to work on that. So I think the impact has set in, and we want to protect the port industry that we've got here and our recreational business. And we want to protect the rightwells. I love the rightwells. I love 100 miles. I know everybody thinks I'm crazy saying that. But I've got a large family, and we don't always agree, just like commissions work, but we get along. But the county needs to stand up. It was onerous. The only other thing that I'd say is that, you know, you heard a lot where they tag sharks, and you can see sharks. Well, all ships have what they call AIS systems. That means that's an identification system. If you plug into that system, sort of like planes, you can see a ship anywhere, where it's going, where it's headed, what speeds it's doing. The restrictions on the ships were exorbitant. You can't maneuver a ship under these rules safely. Neither can the pilots do their job. But anyway, I was glad to see that our delegation agreed some changes were needed made. So I just ask that we make a motion to adopt the resolution to, in opposition, as I read it earlier.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Fendig. Do we have a second? A second by Commissioner. A second by Commissioner Quinn. Any other discussion on this adoption?
We're in opposition to the adoption. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Yes, we are adopting a resolution in opposition to the docket number from NOAA.
Other rules as proposed.
To the speed limit. Any other discussion?
And so, I guess, because I was kind of thinking that the young lady that spoke earlier, I think, made some good points about a compromise. And, but Commissioner Fendig, you just said something else that, could you restate what you just said?
Yes, the rules as proposed, our state delegation in Washington, Warnock, Carter, and our representatives just put a public notice out that they agree that the rules need to be changed. So, it's consistent with the feedback they've been getting from the industry, both our ports, the Georgia Ports Authority, so.
So, we're doing out of the plan?
That's correct. Yes.
Commissioners, any other discussion? And I believe the motion was by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Quinn. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number 15, added to our agenda tonight, consider approval of an amendment to the Glendale County Code of Ordinance to amend portions of Section 2-15-3 to change the speed limits of the East Beach Causeway on St. Simon's Island and for other purposes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you for having that discussion at the work session Tuesday and going through all the issues on that. So, I don't think there needs any further discussion. I'll make a motion, but I want to make sure if there's any other.
Well, I just, I do want to say, you know, there is some importance or desire to see this going ahead and get passed with the Georgia-Florida coming up. I mean, you're going to have a lot of folks in this community that'll be taking golf carts down there. So, there was a discussion earlier by a gentleman who said that there wasn't any immediacy to it, and I would argue, no, there is. And that's the reason why it was moved forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? We have a motion by Commissioner Fendig. I did not hear a second.
Yes, I do officially make a motion to approve the amendment to the Glendale County ordinances to amend portions of Section 2-15-3 to change the speed limits on East Beach Causeway on St. Simon's Island and for other purposes, which basically allows PTVs to cross East Beach as they historically have done.
Second.
For public knowledge, it's from Demery. It's just East Beach Causeway.
That's it, right. From Demery roundabout to East Beach roundabout.
All right. So, I think officially, Commissioner Fendig made the motion, Commissioner Quinn made the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. I think it's important to also add that in this, we did bring this to a work session. We discussed it in full, the pros and the cons. Public was aware that that was going to be on our Tuesday work session. So, to bring it forward tonight, I think entirely appropriate. That concludes, I do believe, at long last, our regular agenda, unless, Mr. Attorney, you want to keep us here laboriously and go over any, if we need executive session, please say so.
Can I get 10 minutes for pending and potential litigation?
Never had a two-minute exception.
10 minutes.
All right. All right. The county attorney, all kidding aside, has said that we have a need for executive session for the purpose of litigation.
Pending potential.
Pending litigation.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go to executive session for pending litigation and potential litigation.
For two minutes.
Did I hear, all right, I have a motion by Commissioner Quinn, a second by Commissioner Rafalsky to go into executive session for pending litigation and potential litigation. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. I need a motion. That was it.
That was your motion?
Yeah, we got it. We don't need it twice. We're in recess. Second by Commissioner Quinn. All in favor to come out of executive session, please raise your right hand. I think that's unanimous. So...
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve county attorney's recommendations regarding potential litigation and pending litigation.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rafalsky, a second by Commissioner Booker to approve county attorney's motions for pending litigation and potential litigation. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. And anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Commissions approve the executive session minutes from September 15, 2022, and October 6, 2022, executive sessions.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Booker, a second by Commissioner Quinn to approve the minutes from two previous executive sessions. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. Any other business to come before? Oh, we have six in favor, one abstention because he was absent on the seat. Look, we're not changing it yet.
Okay. I didn't think it mattered.
Any other business to come before the commission tonight? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rafalsky, a second by Commissioner Booker to adjourn. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. We stand adjourned.